Okay, it is six thirty. I'll call to order the, where am I at here? November eleventh, twenty twenty-five, Tenino City Council Work Session. We have, it's supposed to be, oh, here he is. Hey, Mike, can you hear us?
Yep, there he goes. Yep, I can't.
I had asked Mike to be on here to talk about this water system plan update and also the water reduction usage plan before the meeting, so he could, wouldn't have to sit here during the regular, wait till the regular meeting. So, Mike, can you just kind of go through this work, this, what happened with this whole system plan and fill us in on anything that, you know, changes or anything you think is important for us to know before we talk about it in our regular meeting?
Yeah, it's just, it's been a long road getting here, but we're, we're almost there. And one of the key things is to get this done this year, so Health doesn't come back and say that we need to use twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five water use data, because the last we had was twenty twenty-three, which is when we finished it. So, that's the big thing, is just getting it done and then, you know, you have this tool to address, you know, any growth and new connections. So, that's, it's just been a long time coming, but good to have it done. So, but there are certain requirements that Department of Health does mandate that you do. And the first is a public hearing to discuss the water use efficiency goals because you are over ten percent lost water. And if you're over ten percent lost water, then you've got to establish goals to get below ten percent. That's their, their threshold. It's pretty close to ten percent. It's not that bad. Forks, for instance, is forty percent. So, guys are doing good.
We were really high there for a while.
Did he say, did he say forks is forty percent?
It used to be. Remember when we had all those leaks that we hadn't taken care of?
So now it's like ten percent?
Yeah, it's even a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, so you guys are doing good. Anyway, so I sent that email about, basically, you need to adopt a goal, and the goal would be reducing the average day demand by ten percent over the next ten-year period, which is dual.
So that's the water use, water reduction?
Ten percent over the next ten years?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think some of the things, if I remember right, like you can give out low-flow devices or, you know, you can do some simple things, or I guess even leaks, if we do a better job at fixing leaks, that's a, that's a usage reduction. So, there's, there's several things we can do to, to meet that goal.
Yes. So, as part of that, you have to adopt measures that you're going to implement so that you can meet that goal.
Right.
And those are the four measures. Orientate great structure for single-family customers. Orientate great structure for commercial customers. Those you already have in place. It's a, it's a tiered system where the more you use, the more you pay.
Right.
Basically, you're, you're disincentivized to use a lot of water.
So individuals reduce their water usage will help us reduce.
Right. So, when either commercial or residential reduce their usage, that, that helps me, our goal of water reductions? And part of that is making incentives not to use as much water, I think, is what you're saying, right? We already have that in place on our, in our range structure.
Yes. So those, those are good policies to have in there. And then the automatic meter reading with a system to alert customers about demand-side losses such as leaky toilet or booking faucet, something like that. And that, you started in twenty twenty-two and you're, you're a moment ahead with that.
Pam?
We're having trouble hearing with you.
We're having trouble hearing this guy.
That's okay. Yeah, no big deal. I know, when I'm in the audience, you don't realize it either. Sorry, Mike.
Okay, can you hear me okay? Is that?
Yeah, we can hear. It's just not real loud, so we're good now.
Okay, okay, okay. And then the last policy to implement would be the classic reclaimed water. You've already got hundred thousand gallons a day of reclaimed water out to plant, and you could potentially evaluate whether it's cost-effective to distribute that water to offset pot water use.
Right. And we're still talking with the Ag Park about, I mean, we had to hook them up to the, the regular water system initially, but I think we're still working with them on how to maybe use some reclaimed water out there versus using just our classic regular water? So that would be, that would be a start anyway to that.
Yes, yeah. So those are four measures that you are already working on or can work on from the reclaimed water that will placate Health, that, yeah, you have a plan for how are you going to reduce your, your water use by ten percent? So that's, but, so you present that in the public hearing, and you'll solicit any comments from the audience, if there is any. And then the other part of the public hearing is to solicit comments from the public concerned with the draft water system plan, which has been on the website since, you know, about a month now, since mid-October.
Yep.
When, when does this have to be done?
Tonight. We're going to adopt it tonight. And I'll, I'll explain when we get to the, we need to have the public hearing, and right now it shows on our, our schedule to vote right after, but we'll have to close the public hearing and actually vote on accepting those during the regular meeting.
Okay.
Under new business. So we'll have to make a little bit of a change under the, on the agenda to.
Okay.
Yes. Yep. So then, at that point, assuming there's no comments from the public on either draft water system plan or the water use efficiency goals, then you can close the public hearing and go back to your regular public council, public council meeting, at which point you can have a discussion about adopting those goals for the water use efficiency and the draft water system plan. And then once that's done, then we can submit the revised draft back to Health and get approval. And if you just word the motion such that you're approving the draft water system plan and you don't expect any changes on the final, that's sufficient for that.
But this does go back to the state for approval after we approve it, right? So theoretically, there still could be, if they have something they need changed, they could, but I don't doubt it happens after they.
It, it's not likely.
And I got to ask you one question. I know we started this in twenty twenty-three, and I think when I looked at the cover page, it had all the people in office in twenty twenty-three. Yeah, it does have. If we just change that, is that a big deal? Who we just put the, should we leave? Who was in office in twenty twenty-three?
Since we're, since we're putting in twenty twenty, because we still haven't done our engineer stamp on it either. So, yeah, that should be a twenty twenty-five stamp with a twenty twenty-five mayor and council and all personnel.
Okay, so I will make an amendment to this to basically say that we'll all change to the current twenty twenty-five officials on that?
We can change that. We still have to, this is, so we're working on the draft now, and then assuming there's no questions from the audience or public, then we'll submit it. But before we submit the final, that's a good point, we should update all that information.
Anything, okay.
So we can do that before we resubmit it to Health. Yeah, good point. Yeah.
You can make a note of that, but I'll, I'll, we'll send you a note too. But when we adopt it, I'll just make sure we adopt it with the changes to the current personnel.
Yes, yeah.
Anything else in here that's significant that you can think of that we need to, any significant changes? I looked through it and didn't see anything that was concerning, but council, you have any questions for us as far as?
I've never seen it, so I don't know if I have questions or not.
No, in this, this service area is existing city limits for the water system plan.
Yeah.
It includes the Ag Park.
Great. Okay, anybody have any questions?
So you, you're looking to approve first reading?
This is, I don't think this has to have a second reading, does it, Mike? I thought it was just, we could just have the public hearing and approve it by the state requirement?
It's not this, yeah. No, it's not an ordinance, so no. One, one go around.
He says it's not, it doesn't have to be a, a second reading. It just has to be, have a public hearing and voted on by the state rules?
Did we have proper news?
Yeah. It's been on our website, and we published, published it, put it on the public, well, to the paper, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, like three weeks ago or more?
Yes. Yeah, it was, it was published as a public hearing.
The public hearing was published sometime ago?
Yes, yes, yeah. Anything else?
Okay, we'll get our public hearing done and put it on the agenda.
Okay, then, yeah, I'll be, I'm around, so if you, if you run into any issues, Mayor, you can just text me and I'll, and.
Get pop back on? Okay.
Yeah, if you'd be, yeah.
Jeff, I didn't catch you. Did you want any, was there any questions, Jeff? Sorry?
No, no, not, not on that plan. B.
Can't hear you very good, Jeff. I don't know if you're, I can hear you, but not very loud.
No, I have no questions. I'm good.
Okay, no questions from Jeff. Okay, sounds good. I'll buzz you if something comes up.
Okay, great, okay. Thanks, Jess.
Thanks for logging in.
Yeah, goodbye.
Okay, do you want to go just briefly describe what we're doing with the levy, levy limitations worksheet and the budget, just so we kind of have an idea before we go into the regular hearing?
Let's see. You want the budget first or the levy limit?
Let's do the levy limitations.
Well, I went over this with Thurston County, and they sent it back as correct with a few minor corrections. However, as I understand it, the fire, fire district's levy passed, so the numbers are going to change on this a bit. Just got them yesterday. They're still not emailing me directly. I had to get it through Maria. I thought they had corrected that, but, so I will actually have new numbers for you on, at the next meeting. I should be able to send it out well before then, though. Because the highest lawful levy will be one eighty-seven instead of two fifteen. You're going to see that on, I believe it's page two of the levy limit worksheet. Let me see, we're, sorry. This is quite a complicated worksheet, and I have a, oh, no, I'm sorry. It's on page one, number I, about a little more than halfway down this page, where it says two point one five, two eight. That's going to change to about one point eight seven.
Because, because of the.
Because there's a limit of three sixty, and we're the senior.
Taxing district.
Taxing, in, in the district. So if theirs goes up, ours goes down, because the limit is three sixty. So if theirs goes up to one fifty, conversely, ours are.
Goes, goes down.
Goes down. So I believe the library stayed the same. So, the highest, currently, the highest lawful levy for the coming year is three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine point two five. I'm not sure if that will change or not, because to be honest, I am not an expert on this worksheet. I've had to get a lot of input from City of Yom Finance Director helped with that, but also Thurston County. So hopefully, that, our, our highest lawful levy won't change by very much due to that, so.
I think what we're kind of, what could be updated on here is they, the final new construction numbers aren't, haven't been out or just coming out, just like yesterday or something. So we have to update new construction and the levy rate. I don't think will affect us, but it has to be updated to reflect.
So, so we can have the first public hearing on this today?
Yeah.
That is correct. Next week.
Without those changes, and then the next one, the changes will be in, in it? Okay.
That's what I saw for last year, so I'm assuming that that's okay. Again, my experience with the levy limit worksheet is not as much as I would like.
Yeah, these are very confusing.
We're all learning. It is. And I, I have emailed the, the person at the assessors, or no, the treasurer's office at Thurston County to see if there's more training available for these. But I did send this one to Thurston County, and they sent it back as correct with a couple minor changes. So I, I don't want you to be worried about that part of it, because we are having them check it.
As long as, as long as we know we can do the first public, public hearing and pass the first public hearing, it's fine.
So our change is, and I don't believe this will change, our change is, for our ordinance is three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. That doesn't necessarily mean we're only bringing in that much over last year. It's, again, it's a complicated formula, so I don't, I don't want you guys to be worried. We are going to bring in more than last year in property taxes. Some good news for this year, just by the by, is that this, this month for October, we projected a hundred and thirty thousand in property taxes, and it did come in at a hundred and thirty-eight. So that was good news. So are there any other questions that I can answer or I can get answers for you on the?
I'll just add one little.
Excuse me?
I'll add one little thing. We did ask for the one percent increase, which is we can do without public. So that's what, that's the increase we asked for, and this is the one percent.
Yes. So if you have any, or if you think of any questions, please email me or text me, Linda, on the weekend.
Yes.
And let me know.
On the weekend. Listen, when you get my age, you've got to do it right away. Don't wait for yet.
I know that story, believe me. That's why I have a notebook mixed my chair. Okay, so on to revenue. I want to make clear to anybody looking at this, that twenty twenty-five, these are also budgeted amounts, not actuals. So this is what was budgeted at the beginning of twenty twenty-five or the end of twenty twenty-four. It's not what we brought in or extended in twenty twenty-five, okay?
These were projections. These were projections.
Well, the twenty twenty-five column is what, was the final budget.
Final?
For twenty twenty-five, but it's not actuals.
No, okay. There we go.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I just, because I was looking for it too, and then I was. So some highlights for the revenue, which we're looking at tonight, but if you have questions on any expenditures or anything like that, or suggestions, you can let me know. So unfortunately, the twenty twenty-five budget for the beginning balance was more than double what the actual was. So that's going to affect everything down the line. And it's going to, go ahead.
Go ahead. You can finish up and then I'll, I just wanted to make a comment on that before you get done.
Okay. That's just what I'm seeing in the system. So the beginning balance for twenty twenty-six with the projections we have now is approximately forty thousand. Now, that could change depending on if we don't spend as much as projected for November and December this year, or if we bring in more revenue, which I feel like that's unlikely, that we're going to bring in more revenue than, than was projected. Included in this proposed twenty twenty-six budget is a one point five COLA for employees, which is probably an additional eighteen thousand in payroll and associated taxes. The admin court clerk position is being filled at point five rather than replacing Rana at another full-time position, in part due to our district court services going to Thurston County. That contract is twenty-five thousand a year, but at Rana's rate in benefits, that's less than half.
Yeah, I was going to say, that is.
Now, a new person coming in, of course, we're, we're making the position part-time, so there won't be associated benefits. There's still going to be payroll taxes, but no associated benefits. And of course, they won't be starting at the top step where Rana was when she left. So both those things are going to help. Public Works is requesting another full-time position, which will affect general funds slightly, because a small portion of the wages for that person are projected into the general fund, but not, I think, only about ten or fifteen percent of their wages are going there. So, did you have comments?
I just wanted to make a comment on that, so it's clear what's happening. If I believe and tell me this is wrong, that Brent is going out to the wastewater treatment plant early in this year, so we won't have that contract out there anymore. And so this person will basically, I think, kind of take over the position that Brent holds now. But, so we'll actually, I think, save money a little bit if he, when he get, well, it'll be.
Maybe.
But we won't have the contract out there anymore when Brent gets his level-three wastewater treatment plant operator and is able to do that out there.
Well, and as soon as this new person is hired, he's not, they're not going to start out at the same wage as Brent had, right?
Well, I wouldn't think so. I don't know what they're going to be offered, but I, I mean, they wouldn't be offered at top step, and I can't remember offhanded if Brent is at top step quite yet or not. I don't know how long he's been here.
So anyway, there's not, I don't think there will be a huge overall increase, taking that contract out of the equation when he gets out there.
Right. And, and I didn't, I did not put that contract on here to remove that. So law enforcement is mid-application for the HB twenty fifteen grant from the state. And so, these funds, if they're received, it, it's not guaranteed, but it's looking pretty good. So if, if we receive these funds, though, they are solely for law enforcement. There's criteria. I believe we've met all the preliminary criteria for this grant, and then if it looks more solid, I'm assuming the mayor and I, and will probably bring it to council, I'm assuming, and the chief will get together and discuss what, where this is going to go in law enforcement. So there's that. But we have also filled the third position. Officer Drew Johnson left in January, and Officer Sneed started, I can't remember, the first of July or the first of August. So we're going to have a full year cost next year for that third officer, just so everyone's aware.
Well, we still should have, what, seven, seventeen months' money, and we did spend on the consultant.
Yeah, I think he went until the end of January, so six or seven months, yeah.
Okay, so six months.
For twenty-five.
Yeah.
But for twenty-six, it's going to be a full.
I understand. It's a full contract, but you've got half a year to make up for that first year.
Yeah.
Because we didn't spend it on anything else. We didn't spend it on the officer.
Yes. Along with that, and this is more on the expenditure side, the police chief needs a new vehicle. We're looking at that. I think we've spoken about that before. But I'd really like if everybody can look over the revenue side of the budget, because there's a system thing where if there was money in there in twenty twenty-five for the budget, and I put a zero for this year because we decided we weren't bringing in that revenue, or the expenditures also, if I put in zero and I don't put a note beside it, it will automatically bring in last year's budget. So we want to be careful with that. Linda caught one, and Dave caught one already.
See, last year's budget and this year's budget should be different and higher by this year, because this year we should be, we should be getting the law enforcement tax that's supposed to go for public safety.
We got that last year. This will be just a continuation.
I think we got it.
Yeah, but it wasn't part of the, the budget last year.
Yes, it was.
No, it wasn't. We didn't have the time for it to be part of the budget last year.
I'll, I'll make a note and make sure I look at that. Because I don't remember seeing it, but that, I've been looking at a lot of budget lines.
It's under three thirteen fifteen zero 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 zero. We got seventy-five thousand projected in twenty twenty-five.
What did you say, three what?
It's the first, it's like the fifth line on the first page. Sales and use, public safety. That's the public safety, sales tax.
I don't know what the actuals are, but we budgeted eighty thousand.
It was a little more than seventy-five thousand. That's why we budgeted eighty thousand for next year.
Okay.
To correctly.
So are there any questions or suggestions for the revenues this year?
I would just say, I would just add that we tried to be somewhat conservative. We looked at what we got last year, and either increased it very little, or there are some lines on here where the state had, or MRSC had given us projected revenues.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So there's notes on them, like one of the things, where there's something that's kind of odd, like several things on here, like the here grants that we've completed, they're all zero now, and so there's notes there to, to explain why those are different.
I did have a note on here that was supposed to come before the highlights, and I'm sure you all know, but there's a few ways that we arrive at the budget. We have fixed contracts. We have amounts we get from other agencies. There are projections like MRSC, state, county, averaging the previous year. If it's something that, you know, we don't receive from another agency, or we don't have a contract for, we look at the previous year. We average it. We cannot, and the fourth way is we can adjust those by experience from the people that have been here longer than I have, or looking at the past years and, you know, adjusting it as we think appropriate. So.
I just wanted to make one clarification too on the expenditures. Actually, when we talked about the beginning balance of seven hundred and thirty-five thousand, the reason that number is so high is remember when we did those budget, those money transfers from, we assumed that we are going to have to transfer another five hundred thousand dollars just to get through the year. Well, we didn't do that. So that's why our starting balance is so much higher, because we, we assumed we were going to put five hundred thousand more just to get through this year.
So that's not a real figure.
So that's not a real figure. So luckily, I mean, I think this is a good thing. We didn't have to transfer additional five hundred thousand dollars to get through the year. So that's why that starting balance is way more than, yeah, so.
I do have one question.
Oh, go ahead.
You've got charges for services, and on it, you've got warrant costs, court adminis, none of that's going to be anything in the.
I'm sorry, what page are you on?
On page two, right at the bottom. Three forty-one, thirty-three. And thirty-five and forty-nine. Court conviction fees that we would be charging, but we are not going to be getting any of that money, right?
But we, we, the contract doesn't start until February.
We have a couple months to.
Oh, so we have a month or two. I'm sorry, I should have said that. And there is another thing.
Because it's under twenty twenty-six, that's why I was questioning it.
Yes. Good eye, though. We did do, we did project for, so in twenty twenty-five, there was a resolution approving another loan transfer from other funds, but we didn't use it. But we did enter into here, I believe, a hundred thousand, is that?
I thought it was two hundred, but.
Maybe it was two hundred thousand, as a loan from the water fund, and we will need to amend the previous resolution.
Okay.
Basically, because we don't have enough ending balance to charge us out the first of the year, we're going to need to borrow.
Yes, any event that it's needed at the beginning of the year to pay. We get insurance and all kinds of stuff right at the first of the year, that we may not have the, the funds in the general fund.
Now, am I correct? You were, you told me you were going to, anything that's got zero balances across, you're going to get those out of the final budget, right?
Well, I'm not sure. I, I didn't see a place to do it on the proposed budget, but when we print the final budget, yes, we will leave the zero lines out, unless there's something that someone wants in there.
This is a placeholder or something, yeah?
Yeah, as a placeholder for future possible revenue, like the, like the grant for law enforcement. I mean, we want that line in there.
Right.
We put a hundred thousand in for now, because there's been talk of a hundred thousand to three hundred thousand to, so we want to make sure we have a line in there for that. We can amend that at a later date.
When we get the actual numbers, we'll put the, the correct amount in there.
Yes. And, and there may be other grants during the year that we don't, we're not aware of at this point, so we may have to, you know, adjust things then too. Any other questions?
Again, we got some time before the next meeting, so if you go through it and you see something that doesn't look right, just let us know.
Please, don't hesitate. I'm not talking to you, Linda, but.
No, I will.
Because we already know. Linda's caught a few typos that made quite the difference.
My, my last name, please. My, my last name, please.
Yes, well, I'll fix your last name.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've been through the revenues several times. I think they're all pretty squared away, but you look at these numbers so many times, you, uh, I think you just don't see things sometimes, so.
Exactly. Yeah, you start seeing what you meant to put in there rather than what's in there, so don't hesitate to tell me I made a typo or ask questions. Um, and we'll start looking at the expenditures too next year. I have most of them in on here, so if you see anything you don't agree with or have questions on before the next meeting, when we go over those, please don't hesitate to let me know, so we can fix them before the meeting.
Do you have to read this? Do you not read this at the meeting?
Not this one.
Can I have the final one?
The twenty-fifth.
For the end of the year.
For the limit worksheet?
Yeah, for our, for both, or we don't have the final numbers from the county to actually have fully correct balance. These are all just guesses until we get the balance, until we get those numbers.
From the county.
They were actually emailed yesterday for the limit worksheet, yesterday, so I just saw them today.
We're talking about the balance of the budget now, because there's, there's, uh, money that we get from, from the county and state that we don't get until almost, until just about.
No, we haven't received that yet.
That's what we were talking about there. We're estimating the Indian balance, but it's going to vary by the end of the year, it's gonna.
Yes, so, I mean, things will change. I wouldn't imagine they, they're going to change by a whole lot, but hopefully it works out in our favor.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
And everybody knows my email and our phone number, so.
We know where you are.
I know.
Jeff, anything from you? Can you hear okay?
Yeah, I can hear. Nancy, Nancy's a little broken up, but that's all right. I, I do have one question on the, uh, on the tax dying. I can get it here. So we're talking about increasing this, uh, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars or such. And going through the worksheet, I, I don't see how we get that. Um, it, it just kind of appears. Is that, is that all we're getting with?
That's, that's a worksheet from the county, and I will be honest with you, I'm not entirely sure how they come up with that.
I think when we come back the next one, that'll change, because, uh, like she said, there's some updates coming up that we didn't have when we initially prepared this. So I think that'll, excuse me, that'll change. I thought it should be like three thousand something dollars is what I thought it should be, because that, however the worksheet works, yeah. So we'll make sure to straighten out again when we get the final numbers before our next meeting.
Okay. All right, yeah, three thousand, it would, would be the one percent, you know, that would follow all the math that went there. So I was curious where the three hundred came from.
Yeah, I think this is a typo.
I don't put that number in.
I know you don't, but they, they might be mistaken too.
I think, I think that's what helped it. That's what I thought when I first saw it. Instead of three hundred, it should be three thousand something.
Okay, well, have a look at the.
That, that's all. I just noticed that too, and, uh, we'll, we'll see what it looks like next time.
Yep. Okay. Uh, Jody, uh, wanted to talk to us about the food bank. You want to come up and do that, so you can get out of here and get some rest? Move that mic down.
I will do that. Okay. I gotta get my notes out here. Okay, so that we all know, um, SNAP has taken a, a pretty good hit with people, um, mostly our seniors. Our seniors see it a lot more than, than anybody else. So with that said, from September to October, uh, fifty-five and older, um, we went from seven hundred and eighty to eight hundred and fifty-two. And they don't, they, they can't go out and get themselves a second job. We're talking seventy to eighty-year-olds. So there's a number of things going on to, to help alleviate that. Uh, we were able to procure some money when, uh, the governor released some of that money. It came to us because we take care of federal food. Um, so some of that money we were able to utilize to go get food, which this is the thing that I are, I'm constantly fighting about. The gas is costly. And the maintenance on the rigs is costly. You can't, it, the, the food doesn't just miraculously appear. It's, we've got to go get it. We've got to, we've got to have volunteers to go get it, and it takes, it takes the fuel. So we're able to utilize some of this money that the governor, uh, released to help with that, along with, uh, purchasing food. So we're able to get some other things done with that, um, which we're very happy to, to, to do. But we just need to understand that even if they turn it on today, it's not going to fix the problem. If a majority of our folks lose their insurance, they've got to spend that money to get insurance somehow. And generally, that's food, that's going out to eat. If they don't go out to eat and they don't buy the food, then you have people in the economic situation like in Tonino, um, our, our corridor is not going to see the influx of that money. So it's not just about food. It just really isn't. Um, but I do want to say that the, the numbers are, are just phenomenal for us. Uh, we did sixty-three families today. And, you know, a number of them are, again, are seniors, um, but we're also seeing larger families coming in, nine, ten, that kind of thing, that, that they're, they're bringing in their, their, their parents, their grandparents, their aunties, uh, because they can't make it. So that's, that's where we are. Um, so that in, also impedes the, the thing of, let's get these, let's get these people moved through the system, um, so that we don't take up space in the, in the roadways. We're trying to, we're trying to really stay on top of that. Um, I've been on, I've talked to Maria, she's been out, she's looked. I've been out there, you know, please do not park in somebody's driveway, do not, that kind of thing. Um, got to make sure that we can get our EMS through there if they need to come through there, um, and that kind of thing. So we're, we're all in this together, and we all need to kind of work together to get us past that. Um, for the warehouse, uh, we've just about got the heat in, which is the number one thing for my ladies. They've got to have their heat, or they don't want to be there.
Well, I don't blame them.
I don't blame, I don't blame them either. Um, so as soon as we can finish up the heat and we can get all of that thing, that kind of thing written off, um, then we will get the insulation in. And then it's, we need to finish up the electrical and a piece of plumbing, then we're done. We may have to camp out a little bit, but we'll be, we'll be pretty much done. So that's where I am. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you want to just tell them about what's going on Thursday, just so?
Oh, um, we are part of the, um, King Five, their, their food drive that they do. Um, and they're coming out to the food bank at ten o'clock on Thursday. I have asked John if he would be present to represent the city. If anybody else wants to come, you're more than welcome. You'll have to wear a little neon vest there, John.
A what? I can't, I can't feel like Santa?
No, no, I, I don't need to run over. Please and thank you. You know, we try and keep everybody safe the way they're supposed to. Uh, so, yeah, so, uh, Drew Michelson's coming in on Thursday and, uh, to see how things are. But that's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Jeff, any questions for Jody?
No questions.
Okay.
I just wanted to say real thank, thank you again. I know it's been overwhelming. Uh, just for your information, you probably have all heard, the church is stepping up and trying to do, uh, do some soup things at nighttime, where there's people that want to come and take it on Saturday.
Yeah, yes.
And anybody can go. In fact, I think Joyce and I are going to try not just coming Saturday, the one after, and give a donation.
Yeah, and you don't have to be, you don't have to need food, just, just, it's more almost like a social gathering. I went last Saturday, and they had like two pots of soup. They were this big around and this high.
Yeah, I think they.
So anybody that, just, as, as much of a social thing and people just connecting as, uh, helping feed people that, that need the food, so. And they have like a two hours of eating inside, and then they have given, after that, you can just come and get a container of soup and other things, whatever they choose to make, so it's just another option for people if somebody's hungry and needs it.
So some of the, some of the other, um, areas that are doing the same thing, um, they're doing, they're doing, uh, a wealth of good, because, as we all know, this kind, this kind of thing that's going on right now is not helping anybody's psyche. And so to have community is the best for them, for any, for any of us. Um, we're also, we've partnered with Jessica and company over there, um, to help them as, as we can. Um, the other thing too is that we're helping, partnering with, uh, the Eagles for, they're having a Thanksgiving dinner um, on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And we'll have turkey, but we'll also have some beef in case somebody doesn't like turkey or can't eat turkey or whatever. Um, so come play cards, starts at three. Dinner's at five. Um, if you don't have a place to go, it's free, that kind of thing, so.
And just something I'll add real quickly on, uh, the Su- Super Saturday or whatever, I think that's what they're calling it. Uh, if you know people that may, especially elderly, that can't drive, it may, it'd be nice if we could connect where they were thinking about talking at the first meeting, to kind of set up a some kind of system, but if anybody knows anybody that maybe can't get there, reach out to them and.
That would be, that would be very helpful to our seniors. Um, we're looking at doing that for the Thanksgiving as well, um, to get them picked up, to make sure that they can get there, to make sure they're okay. Uh, we just need to check on our, our people. Tonino's really good about that.
Well, I also think it's, it's worth mentioning that the food bank takes personal donations also.
Yes, we do.
Wants to buy food and, and give it to the food bank, they certainly can, so.
Yes, yes, we, and we, we take money.
And big gives.
And money.
And of course, right now, the big gives, uh, you can go online and.
Yeah, yes, uh, give, uh, online right now, it's give local, and so that's, all of that money right now is geared towards.
And is that helping?
Yes, is geared towards getting us moved. Getting us, getting that building finished. And if, again, if anybody wants to go down there and see what's going on, just give me a call.
I know I need to do that.
Everybody knows kind of how to get a hold of me, I'm sure. Um, but then we can, I can get you in there and you can look at and see what we've done. We've done a lot.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Yeah, it's, it's not even what it used to be at all. So, um, again, thank you very much. I think I'm going to go take a nap. And then, uh, again, Thursday, if you, there's probably going to be a little heavier traffic on Thursday, only because I don't know who they're bringing or what's going on there.
Well, and you're, you're delivering on Thursdays too, don't you?
No, we do not deliver on Thursdays, but we have a truck come, that comes in, so that just kind of is a little crazy on its own, um, kind of thing. And I just got told that our other truck is down because it's got a problem. So I got to call somebody in to get that fixed. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you again, Jody, and all your volunteers, so, thank you. Have a good evening. See you soon.
How did you get it? Did you get something from George, right?
I didn't get anything either. Uh, you want to, just got fifteen minutes, you want to try to knock out some of the reports? I didn't see, like you said, I didn't see anything from George about Commerce, uh, EDC or study. Arch Commission, anything there? Timberland Library's not here. Civil Service Commission, I haven't heard Jody was part of that, but I don't think they've had any meetings. Finance Committee, we didn't meet this time, we'll hopefully meet before our next meeting, once we kind of have a kind of a, before we talk about the, so we'll do that. Planning Commission, they have a meeting tomorrow, as far as I can see. The, uh, as far as I see on their agenda, uh, they're going to be looking at making approval of that and forwarding, forwarding it to the city council. So hopefully the city council next meeting will be getting the recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve that. They, it's out, it's on our website, I believe, isn't it? So if anybody wants to look at that document, it's on our website, and it should be on our agenda before the next meeting. So take a look at that, if you have any, there will be a public hearing on that, uh, ASAP. I will also add that we got an extension from the state for our grant until the end of the year, so money-wise, I think it's thirty-six thousand dollars that we hadn't spent, is extended till, and we have till December thirty-first to get this completed. So that was good to get that done, because originally it was supposed to end in July, I believe, so that extends that money out till the end of the year. So we should be able to recover everything with that. Any questions on that one? I, I don't know all the details, but that's just kind of what I've got from looking at the Communications Public Safety Committee. Anything? Public worksheet?
No.
Let's see, we don't have any. I guess we're back. Nobody's here for the other, so Clerk Treasure, you got anything else to add besides your report?
Well, I apologize. I do not ha, I did not get the reconciliation done, because we were working on the budget. So I should have it ready for you at the next meeting, and I'll send it out as soon as it's done. That's really all I have. Oh, the audit, um, I just have some, uh, updates to the notes for the financial statement, and then we should be done with our part of the audit, and, um, hopefully we'll have an excerpt conference in the next month or so. Also, they did give me, uh, an estimate for next year's costs, which are going to, and we can talk about it next meeting, but it's going to come in around thirty-three thousand dollars. Because we don't, um, we don't foresee any federal grants over seven hundred and fifty. We don't foresee over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal grants next year, or the coming year, so. Um, but if that happens, the cost for the audit will go up, because we will have to have a single audit, so.
But we don't, we don't have anything, I don't think, over that.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Highly unlikely, unless, yeah, they offer some big, uh, unexpected.
Yeah, so, um, any questions on any of that? Not that there was a lot. Thank you.
No, just heartburn with state on the audits.
Well, we're finally almost caught, we're back to our normal cycle. We don't have three or four audits, three to four-year audits anymore, so we'll be on a, hopefully on a just a normal schedule from here on out.
Yes.
We spent a lot of time this last year, uh, on audits. Uh, Mayor, uh, I apologize, I was out of town last week. We had a family emergency, uh, my wife's mom passed away, so. But it was, we were, everybody got to be there, so I'm sorry. I know it was a busy time. I felt terrible about leaving, but I, I just had to be there to support her. Uh, so I will report though, that I did, uh, I'd already said the climate contract got extended until December thirty-first. Uh, while I was away, uh, we had a Zoom for the Yelm-Tonino Trail. That's the, the grant that we got to do the engineering on, on extending the trail out to the Ag Park. Uh, so we had a Zoom on that, just to clear up a few things to move that forward, so that's still going forward. Uh, we had an entrance conference for the 2024 audit that we, I was on Zoom on. And then we did an EV charger check-in, so the chargers on the, if you look at the invoices for today, there's a eighty-five thousand dollars for the chargers and engineering for the, um, quarry site for the two chargers there, so we had a check-in on that. Everything is going good.
What's, what are we charging there?
Twenty-six cents, twenty-six cents a kilowatt hour, which is a lot cheaper than most, most places.
Pretty much.
And that was just for the public. That was a, a grant.
That was a grant also, yes. And that's why I thought it's gonna take some time to see what we get in revenue versus, you know, we're not gonna really have any expenditure except for the actual cost of the power there. But we wanted to build up a little bit of a reserve in case we had to do repairs or anything. So, we're, it's gonna take some time to look at those and make sure we're, we're building up a better reserve.
Not just a reserve, but an actual plan on what needs, what's going to be done, need to be done out there. It's electrical, it's gonna need PMS.
Yeah.
On a regular basis, and that's gonna cost.
Yeah, there is a service plan for the first.
Pays for itself.
Yeah, I think there is a service for five years. There's a maintenance plan for that that was part of the grant that they had to provide five years of service on it. But anyway, it'd give us some time to build up some funds and kind of think about what we're gonna need to do. So, that's kind of what I've done since I've been back. Any questions there? Liaisons be that.
I have nothing.
Solid Waste Advisory Board?
I had a meeting.
Can you get a little closer to your mic there, so?
Turn it on. I had a meeting on last Thursday. The reuse program, which ran from April one to Septem- September thirtieth, Monday through Friday, they had six thousand five hundred and forty-three visits.
Oh, my God.
That was the reuse program that people are donating to Hassel House.
Oh, great.
So, but if anybody needs info, they can contact Laura at Thurston County. The solar land lease at the work started in twenty-twenty-three and it is ongoing. The long-term lease agreement is ongoing, waiting on Thurston County. The actual solar life is projected at thirty-five years, but the contract is for twenty-five with PSE. The compactor work started two weeks ago out at the work and they've not had any problems or delays so far. So, it should be up and running in one and a half weeks and therefore people can come much faster. The rate increase is being changed from a resolution, from a resolution to ordinance and codes. And there'll be a public hearing on that at December first. There'd be new rates, twenty-six and twenty-two-seven. December first is another fix-it fair at the Market Square in Lacey. And they're looking for a new chairman for the solid waste because a representative can only be there for two years.
That it?
That's it.
Any questions? TCOM nine-one-one, I don't think there's anything there. School Board?
Yeah, Haley Huber placed fifty-fourth at State for cross-country out of a hundred-and-fifty-seven, I think. And then the girls' soccer team made it to State, so they play at Cashmere and Tonino Football. They're at Money this weekend for State too.
Yeah, for State.
Good fall sports.
TRPC and TPB?
TPB's in the morning, TRPC, we had an all-day meeting last Friday and we picked two people to, to decide. We picked somebody in a first position and a second position, just in case the first person decided that they didn't like the contract. But we have two people that we, that may be the executive director. We do expect the first choice to accept the contract on, once that's finalized, I'll bring the name forward. And remember, it's getting close to time to figure out who's gonna be sitting up there.
Well, we've got two new members coming in and I can think of one that might.
Hardest one on that one is their daytimes, right? All of both of them are daytimes, right?
They're eight-thirty in the morning.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah, I think Adam could probably.
Maybe, we'll see. Uh, and anything about the legislative, have you heard anything about the legislative session or?
Yeah, I know I start back the day after, the day after New Year's, whenever that is, I don't know. About the second, I guess, yeah.
Okay, we've got five minutes. We'll go into our regular meeting.
Hello, DM?
Oh, Jeff, did you have anything? Sorry, I keep forgetting you're there on that side.
That's alright. I'll speak out if I have anything.
Okay.
What's that?
Oh, it's a recorder. I was trying to see if it can, supposed to be able to translate your minutes right off.
I'm ready.
Okay, see if it works.
Yep.
I'm home, it's the California, I've seen you here. I can reverse, I can bring your trash. I'm ready for us.
You saw outside. Well, I have to put it on, I don't, of course, we're working. Oh, yeah. We don't have a place for you. Well, you can stay inside us. I, I put him there. If I have to go to bed, I should get some more, I was leaving me out, but then I'm in there. When I, it didn't stop me, it was still buddies.
Oh.
They're almost two. They don't, they don't.
We don't.
Oh, yeah?
Craig can, oh, no, Craig. No. She's got those in her bedroom. I don't think they're, they sleep with her. They're spoiled.
Yeah.
Spoiled, spoiled, but they're really good dogs.
Like really, they're just poor.
Really mind-well, yeah, just really good dogs.
Therefore, well, yeah, four hundred was the amount that I got. Has probably been the four hundred. And it does, my mayor put a hundred and two twenty.
So, it, it'll show.
Well, it should show on your donations.
Hundred, you're a dash. Oh. Oh, hundred and eighty. Yeah. Did, uh, long?
Exactly.
And a triple.
Exactly, so twenty-twenty-five.
Four, two, nine, four, a triple. Always wondered if I.
So, how much is twenty-twenty-four?
So, it's uncoordinated.
Ever?
It won't show it in budget, but it will show.
It takes a special kind of uncoordination to do that. I hope the.
I think everybody wants the actual projections.
So, this is not that, yeah, this is so again.
First country is. By the time I got done, because you don't. And by the time I got done, I could not hold my hands without hanging them through here.
Yeah, there you go.
He was mad.
One minute.
I'll try to get to it.
I read three minutes. Ready?
Yep.
Did three.
I don't, I don't think so. You could call me if you don't get what you need.
Right, okay. Oh, sorry.
They're good. We got a minute.
No.
I'll just say too, well, we're just sitting here talking, if you have questions and I'll be here. Like if you wanna have a longer, you know, if Nancy's busy or something, I can always get on here, my computer and get in there and try to find anything.
I think, yeah, we're kind of.
Kinda got this.
Going on, she's gonna come through for me to show me on the actuals.
Okay.
This is for nominally projections.
Yeah.
So, on the actual, I believe she's gonna email me something on that.
Yeah.
So, I think we've.
I mean, it's double prairie.
Of course, but.
Yeah, it's kind of weird if you don't deal with it every day, I understand, so, yeah.
Absolutely.
It's hard for me to understand half the time, so. Okay, it's seven-thirty, so we'll call to order the regular meeting of the City of Tonino for November eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. Please stand for the flag salute. John, you want to start us out?
I sure will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the heart of our, in the middle of all, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll never be united.
Thank you.
Happy Veterans Day.
That's right. Agenda approval. I do have one thing I wanted to change that under public hearing down here. If you look at the third line, it says we are gonna have public hearings on October twenty-eighth and November eleventh. We missed it here, but on the other paperwork, it's correct. So, that should just be November eleventh and November twenty-first, first, twenty-fifth, with the approval before November thirtieth. Other than that, I don't have any changes unless you, anybody else does.
No, no approval.
I have a question. Do we have to ask something for the water?
It's on here under, it's on the, yeah, it's on number six.
Did you second?
I seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda with the change under four ad valorem text, changing the, the dates of the public hearings. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Approval of minutes, we have the minutes from October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five council meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is the consent calendar. We have the consent calendar consisting of, from October twenty-ninth, twenty-five through November eleventh, twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five, consisting of payroll EFTs in the amount of seventy-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and one cent and claims checks number three-three-six-seven-zero through three-three-six-eight-nine in the amount of a hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and twelve cents for a total of two hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirteen, thirteen cents.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been approved and seconded to the, approve the consent calendar as presented. Is there any discussion? I will add, a big part of that is the grant for eighty-five thousand dollars. So, we didn't actually spend on normal operations, eighty-five thousand. That is from a grant that we paid out and will get reimbursed for. Okay, hearing no discussion is, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. We have no executive session presentations, public comments. An opportunity for anybody from the public that wants to make comment, please step up and have your say if you'd like.
I was kind of hoping somebody else would.
Stick your name, inform us, security number.
Uh, do you need the credit card expiration date too? My name's Dave Champagne and I'm a local business owner at Castle Realty. And I came tonight because, well, I wanted to check in with our council. We don't have a marketing department or a public outreach. I don't even think we have a brand for Tonino. But I'm invested, as you all know, in helping bring business and residents to Tonino. I like Tonino. I think it's a great town. And just sitting here tonight, listening to all of this work that's been put into the budget, you guys do a lot of hard work. But the truth is, you do have a marketing department and there is a public-facing part of this that didn't use to exist, and that's Facebook, social media. Whether you want to or not, you're creating a branding every day. And most of it's been pretty good. There's been some negative. You know, over the time that I've been here and, and recently, there was a lot of financial troubles that have been worked through. A lot of it has been worked through in recent years, development at the, the park, lots of things to celebrate. But I think you know what I'm talking about when I say that I've been looking at Facebook and been brought to my attention certain things that have been said. And I'd like to get that resolved. Councilman Lawton, I saw what you had posted on Tonino Talk about what Mayor Waterson had posted on his Facebook. Now, if your Facebook's private and you have only invited friends there, I think you have every right to say whatever you want, free speech and all that. I think you have a right to post what you want and you have a right to comment on it. I agree with what you said. I thought what Mayor Waterson had posted was, some of it was in pretty poor taste. I know we may have differing views and I think it's important that you be able to share the causes that you fight for. I think everyone has a right to do that, even elected officials, especially elected officials, have an opinion. They elected you for a reason. When it comes up for reelection, I think they wanna know what you stand for and what you stand against. But there's a responsibility to being on social media when you're an elected official. And when you're in the public eye at all. In our company, we have some policies and we have some core values that we can lean back on. One of our core values at Castle Realty is respect. Now, I believe in free speech and I own the company, so I tell my agents who work for my company, if you have a cause that you wanna support, you have every right to do that. It may be controversial, everything is these days, everything's partisan, everything's divisive. So, if you support something, you may lose potential customers who don't agree with you, because that's how they feel these days. I don't wanna work with you because I don't like what you believe in. And that's a very unpleasant reality that we have to deal with right now. But if you feel strongly about supporting a cause or a candidate and you're willing to lose some business for it, I think you should stand with the courage of your convictions. I do. I try not to say any more than I really feel compelled to say. I try not to mix it up because, you know what, at the end of the day, I look back and say, I didn't need to say that. But if I feel strongly about speaking up for a cause, I'm gonna do it and I don't care what I lose. And I think everyone should be that way. But, but then there's things that don't need to be said at all. If you can't say something nice, don't say something at all. Well, even if you stand for your cause, it's gonna offend somebody, so it's not nice to some people. That's alright too. But if we really examine, and I, I did, what Jason said, and number one, I had a question for Jason. I haven't been able to ask you personally yet because I haven't had the time. We all represent, you guys represent the City of Tonino. If there's an issue that one of you has with another council member or a mayor and that issue is brought to that person to resolve, it may never have to be discussed in the public forum at all. And I think that would be nice if you guys could hash out some of your differences personally before it becomes a public, a public mark. Go in all your good work and who cares if it's a bunch of backbiting? So, I don't disagree with what you said. I agreed with what you said. But my question is, two questions. Did you try to communicate that before you made your comment on Facebook, on Tonino Talk, which has like some ten thousand people on it by now? And also, do you guys have a standard? Do you have core values? Do, because if you do, then you could say, okay, standing up for something you believe in is a positive statement and it's not disrespecting anyone. But to diss or slam or talk negatively about someone, well, that could be considered really disrespectful. So, we just look at our core values. We have them written down. If it's, I support this candidate and here's why, great, no disrespect there. If someone might get offended, that's fine. But if you have a picture of a dog peeing on the other candidate's sign, well, not only is it trashy, classless, but it's disrespectful. So, we wouldn't allow that. And I wouldn't have to say, I, Dave Champagne, owner of Castle Realty, don't allow that. I say, we agreed to these core values when we signed our contracts and joined this organization. I tried to look up core values for Tonino. I don't see any, I don't see a mission statement. It's probably in there somewhere, but you know, the website, it's not always readily available. But I think if there is a basis of agreement on how we comport ourselves publicly and you have to understand, you don't need a billboard to be talking to the public. You don't need an official website to be talking to the public. Every statement you make on social media is you all representing yourselves as elected officials. Now, you might say, this is my personal life. I don't always have to be. I mean, our former mayor, who I love, eh, you know, he was always being criticized for, you know, saying things he shouldn't say and doing things he shouldn't do, you know, offending people. Well, you know. Well, you know, you think that's getting, that doesn't apply to us? It does. And when there's social media, it's like walking around with a loaded gun. It's a huge responsibility that you have. And when you say something, you know what people think about the city of Tenino? I don't see a lot of people come to these meetings or even show up here. They look at social media. There have been businesses that have been run out of town and shut their doors because of social media and people who don't have, don't know how to handle their public facing image. So I hope, for your sakes and for ours, who are trying to represent the city and bring people here, that there could be some discussion behind the scenes when there's a disagreement. And it doesn't have to be discussed out in the public forum. Now, if there was efforts made and it wasn't heard, which based on the tone of your post, it sounded very much like, like the last straw kind of thing. If that had been discussed and it was, and it fell on deaf ears, then, you know, I, I mean, I would, and the question to you would be, did you feel that any of your posts may have stepped over the line from policy opinion or public opinion to maybe disrespect?
We can't answer you.
Okay.
I can talk to you one on one.
Um, then I would be glad to talk to you and I'd be glad to talk to you, Jason. I would like to know what's going on. But regardless of what comes from those conversations, there's gonna be some new people coming in here. And if you guys don't have a common agreement on how to comport yourselves around these things, it doesn't have to even be a rule. It could be a simple value that you all agree on, that you can look and say, did we violate that, that value? And, you know, respect and cohesion, you know, come up with your own. It's your, it's your council, so.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments.
Sure, and I could stick around after if you're around. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to public hearings. We have several today, so I'm gonna put this sign up here in case anybody wants to make comment on it. The first one we are discussing is the ad valorem tax, where we already had explanation under the work session today. But I wanna open this up to public comment. So I put a sign up sheet up there, so anybody that wants to make comment, please sign up on the, on the sheet when you come up to speak. The public hearing is for public input and discussion of the ad valorem property tax for fiscal year twenty twenty six. This public hearing will proceed in an orderly fashion, and I would like to ask your cooperation in the following procedure. Everyone present will be given an opportunity to be heard. The clerk will be recording what is said. Therefore, when you address the council, please begin by stating your name and address. Before hearing from the audience, I am going to introduce Nancy Reddick to present information about this project. You don't have to go into the detail, but, yeah, since we've already talked about it. Huh?
You want me to read this?
No.
Not everything. Just, just explain what, what this is, basically, what, just, just basically explain what this ad valorem tax is and why we're doing this.
Okay, well.
Just for the public, if they came in after our work session.
Well, I'll read this, because it explains it. Thurston County has provided the assessed value and property tax worksheet for the purpose of calculating the ad valorem property tax for fiscal year twenty twenty six. The city will hold two public hearings as required by R C W eight four point five five on, and I'm sorry, the dates are wrong in here, November eleventh and November twenty fifth. And is required to pass the resolution adopting the twenty twenty six property tax by November thirtieth, so we will, of course, approve that on the twenty fifth. Ordinance, sorry, resolution number two zero two five dash zero seven. And I provided the council and the mayor a copy of that resolution. It's dated for the next meeting when we need to approve that. Are there any questions?
This is for the public. So this time I'll open the floor for comments from the audience. In fairness to all in attendance, each person will be given an opportunity to address the council for an initial period not to exceed three minutes. If more time is needed, it will be made available after everyone has a chance to speak. I am requesting the council members to hold their questions of the public until everyone is done. Are there anyone, is there anyone in the audience who would like to add additional non repetitive, what, sorry, I got ahead of myself, public testimony? Anybody wanna speak on the ad valorem tax? Okay, seeing there's two people here and they both shook their head no, we have the public testimony for this hearing is now closed. Does the council, council have any further comments on the ad valorem tax?
Move approval of the first reading of the ad valorem tax for fiscal year twenty twenty six.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of the ad valorem tax for twenty twenty six. Is there any comments or any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Next one is the twenty twenty six. Twenty twenty six annual budget. State law provides that each municipality hold two public hearings prior to budget adoption in order to provide the opportunity for input by the public. Tonight's hearing will focus primarily on revenues for the twenty twenty six budget. Let's see, let me get my. My public hearing thing, how did I got? There was one in here someplace. I might have got two of them. There was two. I can just read off and just put the, I think so. Okay, we'll just use the other one, same, the same speech. The public hearing is for public input and discussion of the twenty twenty six budget. The public hearing will proceed in an orderly fashion, and I would like to ask your cooperation in the following procedure. Everyone present will be given the opportunity to be heard. The clerk will record what is said. Therefore, when you address the council, please begin by stating your name and address. Before hearing from the audience, I'm going to introduce Nancy Reddick to present information about this project. Again, we've talked about it and everybody's heard it, but just for the public, in case they came in late, just explain what we're.
Okay, so this is the revenues for the twenty twenty six budget, for next year's budget. Tonight is the first reading, next meeting on the twen-.
Twenty fifth.
Twenty fifth, sorry, is the second reading, which will include the expenditures for the budget.
That's good enough. I'll just add that anytime between now and then, if people have comments they'd like to make, to please send them to the city or come in and speak up, because we want input from our public as much as possible. That's what makes a good. A good budget is when we have input from the public, making sure we're meeting their expectations and priorities, so if anybody's out there listening or wants to pass on to people, please, please come in.
Move approval of the first reading of the Tenino City twenty twenty six budget.
Second.
We have to ask first if anybody wants to make comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anybody wanna make comment real quick before we? Okay.
Play back the tape. Uh, move, move approval of the first reading of the city of Tenino's twenty twenty six annual budget.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the first reading of the fiscal year twenty twenty six budget for the city of Tenino. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, third one, a lot of updates today. The third public hearing is in reference to the Tenino water system plan. The present, tonight, we need to present and approve the Tenino system water plan. And also, we have one more, which will be the water. So first, we're talking about the water system plan update. We placed this on the website and also advertised this meeting in the paper as required by the state. We talked to Mike Marshall during the work session about what this plan included. So at this time, I'll ask if there's any further questions from the council about the water system plan update. The urgency behind this a little bit is if we don't get it done, they're gonna make us redo all, all the numbers in there.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the water system plan update. Is there any discussion?
I'm not gonna throw any wrenches in it, but I do wanna make note that Mike Marshall also said that we only need one reading of this.
Yes.
It's unusual for me, and all the time I've been here, we've always had two readings, but somebody that's supposed to know more than I do says that we don't, so.
Yeah, I understand. If we get in trouble, we'll come back and re-adopt it. We have to.
There you go.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Hearing no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next one is the water efficiency goals update. So we again talked to Mike about this today during the work session. This one is required by the state to adopt goals for reducing water usage. Our recommendation that we've been asked to adopt is a ten percent reduction over the next ten years. We are already doing many of the things like controlling our leaks in our system. At one point, we were losing forty percent of our water through leaks. We had a major, major works on reducing those. We're down to approximately ten percent right now, which is kinda why we have to do this water usage update, because you need to be below ten percent. If you're below ten percent, you don't have to do this, I, I believe. So we're, we're close. So some of the things, we're trying, again, gonna keep trying to find any leaks in our system and make sure those are taken care of in a timely manner. We've been making sure we, our meters are bad. We've been replacing meters, so we're getting accurate readings, which will help with that. Forget what other ones Mike talked about. Anybody remember the other items that he mentioned in the? Some of the other things I think that are mentioned in the planners, like giving out water reduction kits to people who wanna use those. I know some people don't like those things, but they're available to give to people that would, would like to use those to help reduce our usage. So I guess that's the bottom line. We need to try to reduce our, our goal is to reduce our usage by ten percent over the next ten years. And that's part of our, in part of our water usage plan, but we had to have a separate hearing on that from the regular, the total plan, so the state requires a second, second hearing just on the water usage. Is there any questions on, I guess I have to do the actual public on this one. I have to do like a public, open public, do I have that someplace here? It's right here. So this public hearing is for input on the water usage efficiency goals. The public hearing will proceed in orderly fashion. Sorry, I have to keep reading this over and over. I would like to ask your cooperation in the following procedure. Everyone present will be given an opportunity to be heard. The clerk will be recording what is said. Therefore, when you address the council, please begin by stating your name and address. Before hearing from the audience, I'm gonna introduce myself. I already kinda did an update on what this is. At this time, the floor is open for comments from the audience. Does anybody wanna speak on the water usage update? Seeing none? Does the council have any questions on this? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the water usage efficiency goals?
I think we need to, don't we need to move approval?
That's what I just said.
Did somebody move approval on this?
Not yet.
I move to approve the water usage.
Efficiency goals, second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the water use efficiency goals. Is there any, oh, no. Is there any other comments?
Nope.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that was a lot of public hearings. Proclamations, there's nothing. Am I supposed to do this under, closing a public hearing and passing's under, I have new business, but I think it's sufficient.
I think we already did.
Yeah, we did, but I was officially supposed to close the public hearing and then pass it, but I think we're okay.
I think so.
Resolutions, none. Ordinance is none. I don't think we have anybody else here from the public.
Nope.
Okay, hearing no other business, we'll adjourn the meeting. Oh, anybody have any?
Announcements?
Announcements?